I would be very strongly suspicious that they'd be anywhere near that high. The only reason that this comes up is, and you folks may or may not have heard about it, but we at MINDOT several years ago approved a Starbucks over on Snelling Avenue that became a major traffic problem because of cars queuing up to get in and out of that Starbucks. And they finally wound up having to take the drive-through out because they just couldn't cope with the traffic there. So that's the only reason I'm even bringing this up is just to make sure that we don't accidentally get in that kind of situation.
Yeah, related to traffic, because I think traffic is probably a key element here. Is it, do you know, is it intended that the exiting drive-through traffic goes out that northern? I didn't even know there was a drive over on that north, like off property.
There is, but I wouldn't think it's in very good shape.
Is that the intent, is that they would exit there?
I believe so. Let me pull up the plan.
Because I think that would be so much better. If they had to exit in this one nearer the intersection, that would be crossing traffic. That would be horrible.
I think it's a right-in, right-out. But you're right, they appear to be funneled to the north in that northern entrance there.
It's a right-in, right-out, however, if you imagine a car coming south on McKnight, turning in and going to the drive-through, and somebody exiting the drive-through at the same time, they have to cross each other in the parking lot.
Yep.
And so I think, I think a condition should be that there be some kind of appropriate signage or something that takes them legitimately out the other. When they exit the drive-through, they're either driving behind the whole building structure and going out on 11th, or they're going out that northern. It also gets them farther away from the intersection, which I think would be very important.
Yeah, that was the other thing I was thinking about too, was that it'd be much better to have cars coming in near the intersection and exiting as far away from it as possible.
Right. And I think that that works then, because then they're crossing, they're crossing essentially at the road, which is where they should be interacting. I don't know how you achieve that from a traffic control standpoint, but make a one-way drive around the building there or something? I don't know how you do it.
Okay, I think I finally caught up to where you are. So there's two access points on the east side of the site.
Yeah.
The northernmost is what you are preferring all-traffic exit off.
There must be an easement or something over there because it drives off of the property line.
I'm gonna have to inquire with the applicant about that.
That would, my feeling would be that that's a very important component to make this work well. Otherwise, you need to require them to go around the building and exit on 11th.
Well.
That would be an option.
The option, the alternative, in my understanding, is that if you come through the, if you're coming out of the drive-through, you can immediately go around the little island that separates the drive-through from the pickup lanes or the pickup, and then just go south.
No, that's what the problem is, I think.
That's what their plan is showing.
Yeah, and I don't agree with that process.
In the event or alternative that such cross-access agreement can't be achieved, could we have the engineer, the traffic engineer, whoever would be the assigned person from WSB, review this and give us their?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
They don't like your, and I believe yours is asked the right way to go. If they reverse the direction of the drive-through, then you're no longer crossing.
True.
That's true.
That's right. It's not, but it's not nearly as friendly from a drive-through perspective.
And it would also be funneling the traffic out to that near exit to the intersection, which is gonna be more of a problem.
Right.
It gives you more difficulty with stacking and, yeah, the only other way to do it is drive all the way around the building and have the cars stacking behind the building, which is not very friendly either.
No.
Do we want to, sorry to interrupt, we have our streamer here now. We have, I think, the ability to have our applicant log in and communicate. Do we want that?
I think that would be good if that's possible.
Let me see if I can make that work.
You're right to point him towards the traffic folks at WSB, but it's a good point that, you know, some signage or, I'm thinking of like, you know, the no-U-turn signs where they could put some signage on the end of this island indicating to the drivers who've completed their drive-through, "Don't make a U-turn headed back towards this right-in, right-out. We want you to head towards the northern approach."
They could even do some channelization with pavement if they needed to.
Something, some kind of management. But, I mean, the cross-access easement that is apparently present to the north, I mean, it must be there because there's a drive there, shown there now. If in fact that is functioning and adequate, then.
It looks like it was just paved fairly recently, but.
Yeah. Well, I think they took out the tanks.
Oh, did they? That was gonna be one of my questions.
I think the tanks have been removed.
I think they have to these days now when they close a gas station, like they have to remove the tanks.
Remediation, yeah.
The Duncan you're talking about, in Maplewood or wherever that is, that's a similar situation. People actually do drive around the whole backside when they exit out of that driveway. So it's not unheard of to have people go around like that, but, yeah, the crossing of traffic there would just be a real, a real problem. Even if it's not that crowded, you're still, you still don't want people.
You're still crossing in a parking lot with people who have just gotten their coffee and are not paying attention.
Right.
I mean, I'm just trying to imagine the, you know, the worst-case scenario.
Were you involved when the gas station went in?
When?
When the gas station went in?
No.
I was just wondering if we had traffic study numbers from the gas station, see if they were gonna be comparable to.
No, I don't, I don't recall that, but that was probably one of the reasons that north exit is there.
I never saw that gas station used all that much, but of course, that doesn't mean that, the numbers may not have been there at different times of the day when I wasn't around. A little like that gas station that's up here at 120 and 7th Street. It's like, yeah, I hardly ever see anybody parking, you know, getting gas there.
Yeah, so here's another thing. Here's another thing that relates. The pickup parking stalls are for cars which would be paralleling the drive-through lane, moving in the northerly direction. So if they were cars exiting the drive-through and going south, you've got opposing traffic there as well. So that really doesn't work either, so. I mean, all is very solvable. It's just that we need to, I think, I would suggest we should put some conditions on the approval. I'm looking at the, the large-vehicle access for fire apparatus and such, looks like it works. They've given that thought.
Gentlemen, my apologies for using technology speak. When I talked about ITE, that's, if you don't know, it's, that's the Institute of Traffic Engineers, their latest addition. And that's what we at MINDOT use to try to determine the amount of traffic the new development is gonna generate, so I just. Yes.
Sorry.
But they may not have ever heard of it before.
Have you made progress there?
We are getting there. He is going to manually create a meeting, I think, and then we'll have to get the applicant to log in. I cut the tail into that discussion about fire apparatus.
Yeah, that appears to work.
I did have the fire department look at this as part of the overall staff review, and they didn't make any comments on that, so.
I'm glad that they addressed it with their submittal. I always like to see that.
Well, I didn't get to finish the presentation, but basically, the final recommendation was approval with those contingencies that I had initially discussed, as well as, we'll add the additional one, that they provide a traffic, traffic, I don't know if "study" is the right word. You think of "study"?
Yeah, well.
I think "study".
You just call it predicted traffic numbers or something like that.
Predicted traffic numbers, okay. Or traffic analysis, maybe?
That works too.
Okay. "Study" implies something much.
Much more involved, yeah.
Okay.
We're not talking about like putting in a Walmart or something like that there, so.
Okay, so we'll ask them, or require them, as a condition of approval in the resolution, to provide a traffic analysis for review and approval by the city engineer that is consistent with the Institute of Transportation Engineers for safety compliance, something to that effect, okay.
Because I'm assuming the city engineer would have access to the ITE.
Oh, and then the second one would be, I guess there was two that we would add, that they either provide a cross-access agreement or demonstration, cross-access agreement or approval by the city engineer, city's traffic engineer.
For that north drive?
Yeah.
I'm assuming the owner of the property has that?
Then we'll need to receive.
That it exists, but we should, it should exist in our file. If it doesn't, it should be produced.
Well, with that in mind, do we still have enough questions for the applicant?
I guess I'd like to know what they have, how they have considered the traffic. And I'd like maybe an initial response from them about our suggestion that there be some conditions and controls put in place. I'm really not sure how you keep people from doing the U-turn. I mean, I don't know how you do that and still keep access for emergency vehicles and other such things. I mean, you still, you still need people to be able to get in and out, so.
Sure. To keep, to keep the meeting moving, would you like to opt for the cellphone route? Or do you want to maybe put a pin in this until we get to the point where we can get them on Zoom?
Looking to see if there's action being accomplished. Looks like he's working on it. I guess he's listening to me. We could put a pin in it and we could wait. I think it's worth having the interaction with the applicant.
Okay, I will send him a text and let him know that we're trying to get him on Zoom. This is, this is a fun, a fun meeting.
Yeah. We're definitely playing the games with regard to technology this time around. A lot of unique things in that regard. Are there any other, any other items to discuss in advance of the applicant being on?
I think so. I mean, I think at a minimum, if, at a minimum, we should definitely ask to have those pickup spots moved to the east side of that drive or something, right? I mean, even if there's not a great solution to keep people from doing the full U-turn, just even moving those would solve some of the issue.
I think, I think if we get WSB involved in looking at the traffic flow, one may need to put a "do not enter" sign on that, visible from McKnight on that north entrance, to keep the traffic from, to keep from having opposing traffic going on there. So it makes it essentially a one-way path.
Let me catch up to you guys here. Were you saying we want the pickup spots to move?
No, I don't, pickup spots don't have to move at all. I don't think any of the pickup or the drive-through needs to happen any differently, except, here's what, here's what I'm thinking about flow. I'll share with you what I think about flow.
The pickup spots are for people that order ahead or something?
They're for people that order ahead, yeah.
You're not gonna even be going through the drive-through, so those really shouldn't.
But they're going the same direction as the drive-through. That's the important thing, I think. So, so here is, let's see if I can make this happen. I'm trying to make this look like something I can share in some manner or another. So, I'll just pass it around a little bit. See the red, the red arrows? There's the drive-through arrow and there's the pickup arrow.
Yep.
And they're both exiting out the north, but they are not entering at the north. So if, if you were to just put a "do not enter" sign over here, up here at this drive, then people wouldn't be coming down this way and opposing that traffic. But, so my thought is, they're always entering over here or over here someplace and always exiting out there. Now, the pickup people are gonna come in and do this.
Yeah.
They're gonna, they're coming and doing that, but then this area becomes much less congested.
Right, they could, the way I see it, they could, the most efficient spot for them to come in is here and go down as you've drawn.
Yep.
But they could also.
If they enter up here, then they're, then the exiting traffic is opposing and crossing the entering traffic.
Correct.
So that's why I didn't want them coming, I didn't want them entering here, or, or I didn't want them coming down here and oppose, because then they've got to cross right there at the drive, which would be just nasty. People coming in in a hurry and people exiting in a hurry, you know, it's a coffee shop.
Makes sense. One car every minute or so.
I mean, I go to the, I go to the Caribou over on 120, I never enter the Caribou parking lot anymore.
No, that's.
Not in the morning.
Busy.
I park in the adjacent lot and I walk in.
Walk in, yeah.
Because it's just nasty there.
You know, so many places, if you're not careful, you get trapped. It's like that.
Did you see that?
Wendy's over there at White Bear.
My point was just if this.
Right off of 694. You know, if you park on the east side, you can get trapped in by people who are in the drive-through lane.
If they're coming down, but I'd like to say nobody's coming.
If I'm not driving too, I always go over to the west side and park over there because then you're opposite the drive-through windows and people are picking up and then.
Recording in progress.
Sitting there waiting for, to get their turn at the speaker.
Hello? Yep. Okay.
I don't think so, but I wonder if those folks are naturally drawn to emerging technologies.
Probably stay able to cope with it better.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, Elliot, can you hear us? Oh, I'm on mute. Elliot, can you hear us? Hello?
Can hear you. It doesn't work.
It's gonna work. It looks like he's talking.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to get sound and I had it for a sec.
Okay, I think we hear you now.
Okay.
I had my computer not muted.
And I can hear you as well, so I think we got it.
It's complicated.
I can't hear him though anymore.
Yeah, is he, does he appear to be speaking?
He does not.
Bless you.
Remember how you applauded yourself for 30-minute meetings?
Yeah, well, you know, it happens sometimes. This, you know, it's, it's important stuff. I'd like to see.
Oh, no, I'm teasing.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't count IT problems as.
No.
He's not muted, no. And it looks like he's speaking, or it was a second ago.
I am here still. You can hear me.
We hear him over there.
How do we get him, how do we get him out here?
Aren't we just all move into his room?
I'm in favor of that.
Well, it usually goes quite smoothly, actually.
It does.
I mean, the biggest trouble we've had is trying to get that monitor to show the right thing, but.
This is an improvement.
Other than that, you know. Hello? Hello?
I think he was. Can you, can you say something again, Elliot?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay. We can only hear him out of your room, though.
Yeah. Just turn it up a lot.
The issue is that we're in council chambers and the audio/video is in a little tiny room to the side.
Complications of COVID, huh? That's where we got into this. We didn't used to do Zoom meetings at all. You just had to, you just had to show up. Yeah, you would think. But it's, it's tech. It's tech and it can be complicated. Talk amongst yourselves. Well.
Like your process to make it enter only, no exit.
Yeah, I don't think you have, you don't have any issues with individual personal vehicles and emergency vehicles will do whatever they want, so I don't think we have any issues with that. That's the engineer's job to decide if we're kind of pushing limits, but.
Andy, would WSB typically have a traffic person look at something like this, or would that be an extra step?
It would be an extra step. I would imagine that in Morgan's review, he, if he, I think that if it was a large enough user that would trigger something like this. Also Ramsey County is the owner of that county road. They would probably have some opinions too, and I haven't received any feedback from them yet.
Okay.
So in my uneducated opinion, it's probably a moderate, minimal, rather, minimal concern.
Right, okay.
I think from the roadway standpoint, probably, and even to your comment about Cameron, about the traffic, total traffic count, there will be some increase in traffic, but you know what? A bunch of these people are going by there anyway.
Yeah.
So the increase in traffic is into the parking lot, but not, you aren't gonna see that much increase on the high, on the road, so.
Well.
I don't know, can you manage, can you even come up with an estimate of that? Probably.
Yeah, and that's all it is. It's an estimate.
But, you know, if I want to go to Duncan in the morning and I would usually drive on 120, maybe I'll scoot over to McKnight and take McKnight so I can go to Duncan.
Well, the other thing is that that's going, it's not, I guess, truly gonna be within sight of 36, but it's close enough to 36 that it would be the closest donut shop to Highway 36.
You know what people are going to do. They're gonna be driving north on McKnight and they're gonna do a U-turn at the end of that. What is 12? No.
I'll tell you what they do, because I just did this the other day. I was coming, what is the road that, 11th? So I was on 11th going west. Thought I wanted to go to the Vietnamese restaurant that's in there. I thought I would turn right at McKnight and there'd be a left in, and there was not. So then I had to go and do the U that you just described.
The U-turn.
Or maybe I turned into that street where the church, the church is, and I had to do the U-turn there.
Well, it makes me want to look at what the U-turn situation is there, because I think it's probably not friendly to U-turns. Yeah, it's 13th. 13th is where the island stops, so people will go up and they'll do a U-turn at 13th where it's uncontrolled. That's what's going to happen. Well, I mean, the logical thing to do is to turn left and go on 11th to the west and pull into the parking lot that way, but people aren't gonna like that because it's not, well, they probably will actually. It's actually shorter to do that. Yeah, they'll figure it out.
Worst-case scenario, you know, put a left turn lane in there in the middle of McKnight.
Yeah, the, the Google Earth image is old enough that it has the canopy and the underground tanks and everything in the parking lot, which I don't think is there any longer.
No, canopy's not.
Canopy's gone, yeah. I think they took the canopy and the tanks at the same time, if I remember.
Elliot, can you test your mic again?
We're still trying. Okay, maybe we go to the cellphone, or we have, or we open the tech door and we, and just turn the volume up over there. Yeah, he's on the phone, the tech is. He's doing something.
Jason, I was thinking more about your question you just asked. You know, we always try to operate within the confines of what the planning commission has a mission to do and I guess I always try to couch my comments or conditions that we might add with, I'm speaking at it from my professional experience and, but I'm also trusting that it was, you know, it's a series of engineers and architects and landscape architects that have put this proposal forth. And when you mentioned, you know, changing access, I think, I think we're right to send it to WSB, the traffic engineering department, because they're gonna be really plugged in with the roadway owners and how the traffic flows, so. I don't, I mean, short of recommending a bunch of different access stuff, I think as long as we, we make our comments, again, within the confines of what are we as a planning commission here to do, we make recommendations to the city council, so. That's, that's, I don't know, sometimes the root of some of my comments that I make.
Yeah, it's, it's a limited scope.
Yeah.
Is our job, but, but I think, yeah, getting, getting traffic commentary would be very good. But I, I just kind of wanted to hear what the applicant had to say about that as a an issue. Is, did they see it as an issue? Is it not an issue because they were thinking of it this way? I guess I kind of wanted to just hear that perspective. Yeah, or did they think about it at all, right? You know, we can hear him.
And we heard him.
Yeah, we heard him when he was talking over there, so. Pool hall? I don't know where that was.
It was that end of the building. I'm just trying to remember if it was that.
Oh, it was a, it was a gas station and sea store for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that I wouldn't know. They're really unusual. You don't find them, a lot of them. Okay, call them. Yeah, just put it over here. We'll, we'll do the best we can.
But they're, they're few in front of between otherwise.
Yeah.
Coon Rapids, Blaine.
Yeah, there's a good one in Blaine. I've been there.
We need a pool hall, dance hall, and soccer club, all in.
There you go. Hello?
Hi, this is Brandy Howe. Um, we are ready to just abort the other mission and clear my phone. Are you ready for a couple of planning commission questions?
All right.
I'm going to put you in the middle of everybody.
Hopefully this works. Elliot, your name is? Elliot, my name is Patrick. I, I raised a question about traffic while actually Commissioner Muick, he raised a question about traffic. I also raised a question about traffic because it seemed like there was a possibility that you could get drive-through traffic exiting and, and drive-through traffic entering and having to cross in the parking lot near the, near the driveway. And I, I was just wondering what kind of consideration was given as you were putting the design together with regard to traffic flow?
I guess, um, in general, um, you know, the way that this arrangement is set up, I think we've got quite a bit of stacking that happens in this linear approach. And, you know, the way the flow in terms of coming into the site potentially off McKnight is pretty, I think, unimpeded, right? You come in, you turn around, and you, there's even potentially additional stacking space within that drive before you get to the drive-through lane itself. And then as you go through the drive-through and exit, you, you basically have to come out on McKnight in that, that same direction, or you could take a, a left and go around the back of the building and out on Eleventh. I don't think it's really anticipated as someone exits the drive-through lane that they're conducting kind of a U-turn to turn back south and then exit out into McKnight, because that's really not the natural flow from the, from the drive-through itself. But certainly you could have individuals coming in from McKnight on that northern access point. And, you know, eating the queue up and that for people maybe coming further down to that second access point.
Yeah, if, if they went to the south, the southernmost drive to McKnight, then you would have the crossing traffic problem. But if they exit to the, through the north, um, the more northerly drive, then, then that you've basically created a one-way path, which is, that's, that's where I was going with it, is trying to get some indicators to the drivers that you should go this way. And I was, I was thinking, personally, I was thinking you can probably do it with a little bit of signage. I don't think we'd have to change paving or anything. But to.
Yeah, I think there's certainly the opportunity to add some signage on that little bit of a peninsula that happens between the drive-through lane and the access aisle. I think there would maybe be some potential to augment that shape of that upper part of that peninsula to really sort of prohibit people from trying to do a U-turn.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I guess in, in the end of the day, people are always going to try to do whatever they think they can do. In the past, at least resistance, I think in this case, is to really not try to do that U-turn.
Yeah.
But, you know, there could too now someone all of a sudden didn't get the order right. Well, they're not going to go all the way around. They're going to kind of cut in and either get back in the queue or stop into the store.
But that'll be rare, so. I'm, I'm looking to accommodate the people in a hurry to get their coffee and people in a hurry to get to work after they get their coffee and not have them interacting in their cars. That's what I was trying to get to. Okay. Are there other questions?
Well, I was just going to raise the question of, do you have an anticipated traffic count for this? Because I didn't see anything in the information that was sent.
Yeah, I don't believe there's been any specific analysis in context to, you know, added trips per day or what, how that relates in terms of the flow of traffic on, say, McKnight or Eleventh at this point. That, that would typically get into the scope of an actual traffic analysis. And I guess that just hasn't been something on our radar to date. Given we feel that the site itself has, again, a lot of queuing space and availability to allow for added stacking without impacting flow within the major roadways.
I was just that, I work with the ITE Institute of Traffic Engineer Journal of, of manuals a lot and looking up for donut shop with drive-through, the, depending as to the circumstances, it could be anywhere from four hundred to almost twelve hundred trips a day, and so I was just kind of curious if you had any idea what end of the spectrum it was likely to be.
Yeah, I don't, certainly on, up, up the top of my head, um, that somebody could certainly try to get a better handle on from the operator in terms of what they've seen, you know, kind of firsthand experience at some of their other locations.
Right, yeah, that's.
I think they would have some context to that. It's just not information I have at my fingertips.
No, I understand. Would that be information that would be helpful?
Okay. I do know, certainly could speak to, you know, it being that it's coffee, sort of start of the day beverages, that is always their highest influxes in those morning hours.
Right.
And as the day goes on, there's less and less traffic at that point. And frankly, their, their peak hours are happening when there's nothing else going on or very little going on in the center. So that, that certainly helps, but I know that doesn't quite get at the core of your, your question.
Right, and as I was telling the rest of the committee, it, this is just spurred on by a problem that that occurred over on Snelling Avenue. It's a different situation, but they put a Starbucks over on Snelling near I-94 and they, that wound up creating such chaos, they eventually had to take out the drive-through lanes. And I'm not saying that we're going to have that kind of thing here. I'm just saying it kind of made me think.
Right, yeah, no, I'm, I'm aware of that, that location and the issues they've had there over, over many years. So, uh, yes, I, we, we don't feel like that is a, a factor, I think, in this case, certainly to the extreme nature that happened there.
Yeah.
But certainly understand the, the point of reference.
Right, yeah, and like I said, I didn't, didn't expect it was going to be that kind of, that kind of chaos, so.
Anything else? I don't know that I heard any other comments. All right, I think we're, um, that's, I think that's all I had. Elliot, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, um, does someone want to, is there, if there's no other discussion, does someone want to make a motion relative to this resolution draft?
Can we just go over our
Yeah.
recommendations again?
Yep.
Are we going to recommend the traffic, um, how did you phrase it? Traffic count?
Add, add traffic, um, add traffic analysis.
Do we just say maybe have WSB's traffic?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so site, site plan approval is recommended contingent on city engineers' review of traffic circulation pattern.
Yep. That sounds good.
So is our city engineer is WSB?
Yep.
Okay.
Just make that, um, item four oh six on your list of conditions.
And the cross-access agreement.
Confirm, is that not listed on your conditions?
I don't recall that one being.
Yeah, probably should add that just to, to confirm cross-access agreement for northbound or for northern, uh, drive to McKnight. Obtain documentation. And, and I don't know, Brandy, would that potentially be in the city files somewhere already? Somewhere?
Very.
It would probably be buried in the original construction for this building, probably.
I, I doubt, I doubt it.
If it existed.
Well, I don't doubt that it exists. I doubt that the city has a copy of it.
Yeah, it probably doesn't sit in the records.
Yeah.
That, that piece of property, I think, is probably city property, because it's part of the wet, the wetland area there.
I was thinking it might be.
Well, you know. We have a new layer that shows what city owns.
Right.
That agreement.
Yeah.
Can you, you had the photo up on Google, right?
But I think, I think if you just, I think if you just add it, um, if you just add it as a condition that they provide that documentation. I think that's reasonable. They should be able to talk to the landlord and get their hands on that. Or the county or somebody.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Yeah, okay. So add that also, and then I would, uh, would look for a motion from commissioners to approve the proposed site plan with those conditions.
I will make a motion to approve the, uh, Dunkin' Donuts at the Polar Plaza based on the conditions we just discussed to be sent to council for approval.
Motion from Commissioner Wise, second from Commissioner Muick. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes. That covers agenda item. Agenda item seven A. So the remaining agenda item has to do with the 2023 work plan. Which as I understand, is not a required thing for us to do. Which I thought was kind of interesting, because I always thought it was. I thought it was part of, but apparently it's not statutory that we prepare a work plan. As planning commission, um, we are, as, as Brandy talked to me today, um, a reactive body.
Right.
And we are, we are commissioned by the council to take action relative to zoning ordinance, et cetera, et cetera, and planning-related issues. However, I did think that there was value in looking at sort of what we would anticipate, what, what might get accomplished this year from the standpoint of things that we would put forth to the council to say, hey, I think we ought to do this. To, I guess, in, in a little bit of defense of city staff, I think a lot of it falls on city staff and a lot of it falls on Brandy. And just within the realm of a realistic hours in a day, there is a certain amount that can get done. We rely on staff a lot to bring information to us and present reports to us. That being the case, Brandy, you said you were working on a couple of zoning-related adjustments.
Well, I have started. Let me back up. So I think on the work plan from 2022, we identified as a staff-added item, the subdivision ordinance. I've had conversations with Soren about this and it's I'll, I'll speak for Soren. This is how he talks candidly. It's, what does he say? I think he says it's, it's, it's junk, the particular, that particular ordinance. It needs, it needs to be rewritten. It's just not serving the community in the way that it needs to. Particularly because we're a built-out city. We're not really doing subdivisions anymore, and what we have to do is, you know, build it in such a way that it's going to function for us in terms of redevelopment. So that's, if I were to put something on the to-do list that's related to this body, it would be the subdivision ordinance first. I think the zoning ordinance would also be something that we should take, take a look at. I don't think that's one that needs to have a complete rewrite, but it is something that needs to be looked at holistically, so in terms of updating it, it's going to, all of the contents of that document will be updated, but not all of the policy needs to be thrown out the window. I think it's a fairly solid policy document. It's just disorganized and some of it is not functional from a staff perspective in terms of how do we procedurally take care of certain types of applications, for example. Here, here's, here's one example. The fact that we review site plans that meet the zoning as it's written is unusual to me. And apparently it's not typical in every community, and I checked with Soren on this too, across Minnesota. It's a I guess I don't have the expertise to say how common it is, but it's not, it's not the typical thing for, for cities to necessarily review site plans that meet the zoning ordinance. The community that I came from, if it meets zoning, it's definitely just a staff-led process. It's helpful for the development community. It, you know, speeds up procedures immensely. We probably shouldn't talk too much about what we're planning on doing though, since it's a special meeting, and I don't know, does this?
Yes, it's not really on the agenda, per se. So the details of that, yeah, we should probably bring to another meeting, but I understand.
So subdivision ordinance, yes. Zoning ordinance also on, on the back of my mind to-do list. What else did we have on there? I don't have it in front of me anymore.
The other thing that I thought maybe needed, um, needed to have attention, the zoning map update.
I don't know that we've had any rezonings. So unless, unless we have an applicant that's coming in that says we need to rezone.
Oh, okay.
Or, and I, I haven't learned enough of what's gone on in the past, you know, however long it's been since the comp plan was amended, but typically you don't want to touch the zoning ordinance unless it's immediately following a comp plan. That would, you know, that would be a way to. That would, you know, that would be a way to implement your comprehensive plan, or if there's a request to update the zoning map.
So, yeah, we talked about updating the zoning map relative to the 2040 comp plan, so.
Oh, so that hasn't happened yet?
So I don't think that has happened. And I think that, that was the action that, maybe it's not first on your list, but it probably should be up there at a reasonable point in time. I think those were, those were the things that kind of got, got my attention.
I think there was a parking.
Yeah, there's off-street parking.
Off-street parking requirements would be a high thing on my list, just with potential of development and.
We had gone through some stuff with parking not all that long ago.
Well, we, this group has mentioned parking study many times, but I was never entirely sure what that meant or the intent of it. And I was reviewing, for another reason, the creation of the EDA and some of their past minutes. And I saw that they had mentioned a parking study too, I think, at one point. So there's, there's a lot of conversations in this community that have been occurring around that particular topic. But I think it would be helpful to understand what do we mean by that and what is the, what is the direction that we're headed, the intended direction? So maybe it's.
Well, look at it anyway, I think. Maybe put that on the, let's look at this and evaluate it this year, at least in a preliminary form.
I think that would be part of the.
Part of the zoning ordinance.
The zoning, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
But maybe an area of focus.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I think that's in order.
Specifically just the requirements for new development and, because I think we're, as a, you know, fairly close suburb to the cities, we're a little bit out of touch, I would say, from where a lot of them are in that requirement.
Okay.
One thing I'm wondering is from a kind of a longer-term plan. I believe in 2028, we'll have to do the next update to the 2040, 2050 comp plan. So does it help us any to maybe take a look at the whole plan and see how do we structure this over the next five years so that we don't get caught behind the eight ball on reviews? But when 2028 comes around, we've already taken a look at all the different component parts that we need to, and we can just say, you know, this is good to go.
How many of you have been involved in the comp plan, or any of you?
I don't think any of us have.
Okay.
I think that got done right before I started.
And this will be my first foray with planning in the Met Council. But I have had meetings with our representative, and he's made me aware of the upcoming 2028. And then actually, you know, even before that, you start to actually begin to consider what the scope of work might be and some of those other procedural things, maybe a year or two in advance. So I appreciate that you're thinking that far ahead, but I don't have any answers right now about how that goes.
No, no, I didn't think that you would. I was just kind of wanted to throw it in as something we might think about.
I think it's a great idea to have a firm understanding of what's in that document and how it can best be utilized from a day-to-day perspective. Because it's, I don't know if it's by design on purpose or if it's mandated to be the way that it is, but it's kind of a beast to work through.
I can tell you, one of the areas that I have been involved with at MINDOT was our department was responsible for reviewing well over 100 comp plans. And the beast varies tremendously from place to place. You know, some cities like Minneapolis and St. Paul will give you four, five, and 600-page comp plans. And other cities, you can tell that they've gone to the same developer, to the same consulting company because you can look at page 36 on four different plans and it says the exact same thing with a different map stuck in it. And then that's hopefully they stuck a different map. There were a couple of them. They didn't even get the darn. So, you know, it really is, Met Council does have some guidelines, but I think the guidelines are reasonably loose. But if you've got somebody that, you know, is used to working on them, you know, then I would definitely take their word over mine.
Anything else that feels like it should be a priority? I don't really have anything further. There are other things on the list from last year that we didn't do.
What were those?
The wayfinding sidewalk and bicycle pedestrian plan.
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals. I mean, there's several things on there that, none of which would be bad to deal with.
Yeah.
But I think we need to take small bites of the elephant.
I think so. Well, short-term rentals could be handled in the zoning ordinance. I think that, as far as I know, that hasn't come up as an inquiry from, you know, entities outside of the city. So to me, it doesn't seem like a high priority at this time.
And I know the wayfinding has been in discussion all different kinds of ways.
I think that the wayfinding is something that's already occurred and exists.
Well, there's some, some work has been done on that, and I don't know.
Maybe that's something I can bring up.
I don't know what the council has initiated in that regard, or if. Well, it's getting people around the city. You know, it's like, how do you get people to come into the city off of the gateway trail? You know, it's, when you're downtown, how do you, how do you know where to go to find the library?
Or a good, a really good example is coming south of McKnight, and you need to get downtown.
Yeah.
And thankfully, you have that to downtown, turn here, which looks like you're about to get on Highway 36.
Yeah.
So that's, that's wayfinding that works.
Yeah. Other than that, I think there's.
Oh, and bike and pedestrian planning. I think that we would rely primarily on our comprehensive plan because it already has transportation recommendations. So we use that when, looking at the CIP, for example. So when we start to look at next year's budget, we'll take a crack at figuring out what are the, what are the priorities within that document? And how does it align with priorities in neighboring communities or overlapping jurisdictions like Ramsey County? And then kind of try to prioritize that way, just using our existing documents.
I think part of, part of the challenge for us, for this body, just become more familiar with everything that we already have from an ordinance and comp plan and design guidelines and those sorts of things, perspective. So that we, and not just us, but others in the city that are doing enforcement and staff and whatever, just to make sure that what we already have is being implemented appropriately.
So a library of documents might be helpful.
So maybe just going through, and it's like my homework, can I say? It's essentially my homework.
Well, and part of the homework is really not memorizing what's in the zoning ordinance, but knowing, I mean, when I do the staff reports, I try to give you the sections that I'm referencing. And, yeah, take a peek at that. I also give you the language directly from the code. Maybe I modify the wording a little bit, but the spirit is there. So that you know what your job is basically right in front of you.
Yeah, that's very helpful, for sure.
It is, absolutely.
There's one other item that I would like to see, but it's not terrifically high priority, but maybe it's only for me. But I'd be interested to know when our respective terms end because I'm not even positive when. I think I'm just on here for one year and then I need to reapply, but I'm not positive on that. But I think I filled in, I think I'm filling in for somebody else that left.
You are. I believe the terms are three years.
Right.
I mean, I have to make a note of that and check into it.
Has there been any other applicants for the commission?
Just have had the one, but I believe we're working on getting an interview for the mayor's recommended process. So we need two, or?
Are we good, are we good with? Yeah. So let's, let's get on to the, let's get on to the last bits here and.
I was talking to one of the firefighters the other day over at Housie Park, and she sounded interested. She said she'd lived local, so.
I wonder if there's a conflict if you can be on a commission if you work for the city, though.
Good question. Well, it'd be worth asking. Have to go to Soren for that?
I might be able to ask Google that one.
Maybe. So I think we can move on.
Oh, sorry, speaking of Soren, he is going to be doing commissioner trainings, and he's already been to the park commission. Or no, he's been to the arts commission. He's going to come to the planning commission in March. I think that'll be our only agenda item unless something comes up between, well, that's coming right up. Yeah, and beyond that, I'm not entirely sure what the April agenda will hold. If we get an application, we'll have that. If not, maybe I'll have a chance to begin some, work on some of these other items.
So that's our March agenda unless some other business comes.
Yeah, I mean, with the date, I think it would be difficult to get something logistically put forward.
Only like three weeks from now, basically.
Yeah, because we pushed it back.
I think that's probably our whole agenda, so that's good. So we can, we can probably move on to reports from staff if you haven't already covered everything, Brandy?
I think I have one report, and this dates back a few months. It was related, I think it was Rick Geldman actually brought it up about Shifsky's. He was asking what the status was. And so, oh, this is my notice from November, so I apologize for being so tardy in bringing this. They've installed their trees and they plan to remove any old fence pieces or posts. So if they haven't already done that, then it'll probably be done shortly after the snow goes. That's all I have.
Okay. Any report from council liaison? Anything to share, exciting stuff coming from council?
What typically gets shared, as this is my first liaison, a little bit would be appreciated.
Can I, can I try on his behalf?
Sure.
Since I was at the council meeting, so Soren did the, did the show for us at the council. You'll get the same one, so you'll get to sit through it twice. And then on the agenda, we also had, the planning stuff is what comes to mind. The, I'm not if sure if you're aware, but there was an ordinance amendment that was proposed to allow seating outside on the sidewalks for restaurants and bars. And that was approved last night or two nights ago. So we'll be doing an amendment to the fee schedule to come up with a permit for that. The Lilly Development Project is going forward. They received three grants of the three that they applied for. And a fourth is what was on the agenda. They're looking for the city to support them in a redevelopment grant through deed. And the Anchor Block Apartments has, they've gotten to the point of requesting a certificate of completion. And so that was just kind of a procedural, you don't, resolution of support. I think that was about it from the things that I was reporting on.
Where?
In, the area is already there. We approved North St. Paul taking it over.
Which one?
Silver.
Silver?
Yeah.
Okay. Was it Maplewood before, or was it?
There was like four different, Maplewood.
The watershed districts?
And there was some watershed districts that they're all kind of, here's some money, but North St. Paul controls it.
Washington, Ramsey, Washington watershed. It's, oh, I should know. I'm in that watershed. I can't remember. It's escaping me right now.
And then we approved for them to work on some water underneath McKnight because McKnight's going to get resurfaced, so we're going to try and take care of some utilities before it gets resurfaced.
That sounds good.
I think the highlights of stuff that might be of planning commission interest.
Excellent. And, you know, if we all viewed the council meeting, we wouldn't even need that report.
You can. It's on YouTube.
I have been known to do that, or show up at the meetings. Reports from commissioners. Commissioner Wise?
I have nothing for this month.
Okay. Commissioner Brenna?
I also have nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Muick?
I have nothing.
Well, I think we're done then.
You have one question. Do we, have we heard anything more about that apartment building that was going to go in across the street?
They are, they're still kicking the tires, so to speak. And I think we're at a point where we're at decision time with them. They had a memorandum of agreement with, or sorry, an MOU with the Economic Development Authority on kind of having the first right of negotiations, and that expired at the end of January. So next week is going to be decision time for them to figure out whether or not they want to come back to the, to the EDA for another extension.
That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Excellent. Commissioner Brenna with a motion, Commissioner Wise with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.